Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, August 4th. It is 6:35. I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. I have an acceptance of agenda. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Curran. Do I have a second? Mr. Vignani. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That would be unanimously. Welcome, everyone. I'd just like to remind everyone, in response to the Governor Baker's Declaration of Public Health Emergency, the town of Situate public meetings shall be remotely held until further notice. We are being broadcast live on Situate Community Television. And if you would like to participate in any conversation this evening, you may do so by dialing 425-436-6308, or 425-436-6338, or 425-436-6300. And the access code is 817-651-POUND-SIGN. And you can go online to Board of Selectmen Agendas if you missed that, and the information is at the top of the agenda. And with that, I will ask Mr. Bedrow to give us the Town Administrator's report.
Sure. Welcome to August. Another exciting summer. So on COVID, as I reported yesterday, since last week, we had six new cases over the week. Two were family members who traveled out of state. Another were a husband or wife. An additional case was a Situate resident who has been a patient at South Shore Hospital. The infectious rate last Monday was 1.7. Yesterday it was 2.6 statewide. So those numbers are climbing. On the seven-day average, it's also up almost a point for the percentage positive and the percentage tested. If you saw the Governor today, he's getting concerned about that rising rate, and they're talking about potentially rolling back the size of gatherings from the 25 to the 10, but they haven't done that at this point. The new travel rules are also in place for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Anyone coming from out of state, except for the New England states, New York, New Jersey, and Hawaii, must quarantine for 14 days. If you travel from Massachusetts to one of any of those other states, except for the ones listed, you must also quarantine when you get back. I'll provide a negative COVID test within 72 hours of your returning on either side of your return. I'd say it's a good time to go to Hawaii, but if you go to Hawaii, you're going to quarantine for 14 days, so I'm not sure that makes any sense. But I know it's hot. The numbers are bouncing around right now. We're well into Phase 3. Well, people need to stay vigilant, especially at gatherings. That seems to be where we're getting the spikes now. The potty's on the Cape and Chatham and Falmouth. So wear your masks, keep up your hand washing. If the numbers stay good, we'll be in good shape. If not, the state is threatening now to stop paring back some of our openings and go back into more of a closed mode. So we're hoping that's not going to happen. Discolored water complaints are up significantly. We believe at this point it's due to the warmer-than-average temperatures, which have increased the manganese levels coming out of our treatment, coming into our treatment plant from our reservoir. We've stopped dispensing water into the first tiring brook, which has led to a stagnation in that lower pond. Coupled with the hot water, it is causing a release of manganese from that reservoir into the system. As you know, our treatment plant does not treat for iron and manganese. That then goes out into the pipes where it oxidates, settles into the water, and causes some of that discoloration. Another part of the issue is because we're pumping so much water, the treatment plant is working overtime. The water goes through, the guys are working more. But we're just not set up to deal with this. Right now, Tine Water is looking at a process that we can add to our treatment plant system that would deal with some of this manganese and this discolored water. I believe they're talking to DEP about that now, Kevin, aren't they?
Right.
The chemicals composition of the upper reservoir, in terms of the manganese, is much better than the lower reservoir because that's still flowing. So we're also looking at the alternative of putting a pipe from the lower reservoir directly into the treatment plant. So hopefully, we'll have some answers on that next week and be able to start treating that water and getting some of that discolored water out. Right now, we're at approximately 50% full of our reservoir. We don't drop below 20% for fire protection reasons. Last seven days, our average was up to 1.985 million gallons per day. That's up almost a million gallons a day from the week before. So people are using more water. We are now into full. We're going to start finding anybody that we think has a green lawn to stop the watering. We're also talking this week that we will go to the next phase of the water ban, which is handheld only, no hoses, handheld only outside the house. But we're going to see kind of what we get from Isaia tonight in terms of rain and replenishing that.
It's handheld now, right? You mean?
No hose. Handhelds.
Handheld. Oh, okay.
No hoses at all. Just handheld buckets and watering cans.
Watering cans, okay.
There's people just using a lot of water. Again, it's up a million gallons in one week on the average. The only change is it's still hot out. We haven't gotten an influx of more people or anything like that, so people are just using more water.
Well, and watering your plants is doing nothing because it's so hot out, so you're probably using more.
I mean, we've talked about it. You can tell when you're driving around, that guy's watering, that guy's watering. It's pretty easy to tell. If you don't have a sign that you're using raw water, then you're in violation. So we're going to continue that, and again, we're going to contemplate going to the next level, and we'll make that decision in the next couple of days. For Isaia, if we were on the west side of the storm in western Mass, we'd be looking at about four inches of rain, which would go a long way to starting to refill the reservoir. Right now, we're projected to get less than half an inch of rain. Wind gusts of 40 to 50 miles an hour. There will be scattered power outages. I just heard from former Selectman Harris that he lost power. Scattered limbs down. One of our other selectmen has learned that firsthand, so we do have some trees down, some power outages around town. There is a hurricane watch warning, sorry, hurricane warning in effect for southern New England, and that's till 9 o'clock tonight. So the other big issue, if you go to the beach tomorrow, there is a potential for rip currents on the beaches, so please be careful if you go to the beaches. Libraries open. We now said yesterday, the library is back open. The arrows on the website. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, I believe it's 10 to 5, with the first hour from 10 to 11 for seniors and vulnerable populations. It is limited browsing, as well as limited capacity. The total capacity is 60, including staff at any one time. Masks are mandatory. You are not allowed to stay in the library. You can't sit and read. The study rooms are closed. The meeting rooms are closed. The computers are open. Every other computer is available. They're six feet apart. They're being disinfected after every use. We ask that you still continue the curbside pickup if possible. It's working very well. The library is very happy with it. Two other things that we're working on at the library is we're looking to put some tables and benches outside so that people can go get their materials and sit outside the library and enjoy their materials. And also looking to boost the Wi-Fi at the library so those people will be able to use the Wi-Fi outside. What we don't want to do is allow the Wi-Fi to be on all night and have people in the parking lot on the Wi-Fi when the library is closed. So that's kind of the issue we're working, whether we can turn that off or adjust it at night. But that should be opening very soon. Visit situate townlibrary.org for any information. And then the final update on the projects that we're working on. The squash shop berm has started. You can see the trucks on there. So far, so good. We have not received a lot of complaints about trucks stopping and standing on surf side. They seem to be getting in and out. That is a 75% FEMA project, and we'll bring the berm back to its original design height. Both Bailey's Causeway and Gilson Road are under construction. That's a three-to-four-week construction project each. We are right now concentrating on Gilson Road because of submissions with the gas company. The roads are closed. Glade's Causeway is two ways instead of one way. We have had some complaints from some of the neighbors about traffic and speeds on the surrounding roads. That has been given to the police department, and the traffic people have reached out, and they are putting together a plan to get the speeds down on some of those roads and try to slow people down, sorry. Finally, on the athletic fields, I haven't given you an update on in a while. The athletic fields are nearing completion. The stadium field with the track and the baseball field have both been turned over to the town. Depending on what's going on outside, our first baseball game is supposed to be occurring tonight on the baseball field from the Cranberry Baseball League. The softball, the turf is down. It's put down the last couple of days. Hopefully, it won't blow away tonight. The bleachers, remaining bleachers are being constructed, so those should all be just about done at this point on the baseball field and the softball field. Substantial completion is right now September 1st, to have the whole project turned over. The contractor will be required, and has already been put on notice that he will have to come back to do something about the grass, because obviously, the grass has not grown this summer. So he will have to come back later on in the fall to do something about the grass. But that project should be complete, and it will be on budget by September 1st, and the whole project should be turned over. So that is what I have for right now. I know Karen, we had talked about an update on the regional sewer, so I will leave that to you.
Before I get to that, does anybody have any questions for Jim?
Mara? I just have one. Or am I have two? Jim, can you guys, you know, with the expanding of the reservoir, I know we're waiting for permitting, but what's our ETA then? Is that a year out, two years out?
Permitting is funding at this point, right, Kevin?
It's funding for future permitting. We applied for grants for funding.
So how much are we trying to fund?
I think $240,000.
I mean, at what point do we decide to fund it ourselves?
Well, is it next round? You know, the next round is Nancy.
Not exactly sure.
I thought we were in MVP round, MVP round right now.
Like, if it's submitted, Kyle would be more involved.
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess if we don't get it in this round, we could always put it on a town meeting and fund it ourselves.
I think we should, because I think we just keep kicking it down the...
Can I just ask, along with that, I thought that there was an issue, or I don't, actually, I heard that there was an issue with 3A, something along the proximity of 3A that... We're talking about expanding the reservoir, right? Which is going to give us 30 days more of water there. Water Conservation Commission came up and said that there was some sort of report that there was a problem with the proximity of that being so close to 3A. Is that accurate?
The president's hearing about it. They didn't ring up to me, so I'll look into that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I said to them when they brought it up. I'd never heard of that before either.
We're not moving 3A of the reservoir, so...
Yeah, I didn't know if there was some leakage or something into it. But I agree with Mara. If it's only $240,000, we should be able to come up with that and...
That's just for the permitting, permitting, not the construction. And there was another issue with conservation that came up, and this is a problem also because as we expand the reservoir, we're eliminating wetlands. So that caused a problem with conservation, probably if we could or we couldn't eliminate the wetlands even when we're expanding the reservoir. So there are, there's a few issues. It's not just... Maybe that's what they meant about the 3A issue.
Did they vote on it?
No, this would have to go through the state, maybe even the Army Corps. That's why we'd spend $240,000 to do additional study work and exploration and stack one for permitting so that we could expand it. And that's, that's the big thing. You know, the concern is eliminating the wetlands, even though we'd be creating new wetlands because those areas would be having water.
So can we get a summary of what all the issues are together, so we understand what we can all help to move forward? Because at first, it was just funding, and now it's conservation and a couple of other things.
Well, that was part of the permitting, but that was one of the issues that was raised for permitting. Yeah, we can get that.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Kevin. Ms. Conley?
Yeah, Jim, I know that there were some issues in the harbor with the closing of the street with Otis and Allen, but I think you attempted to fix at least the Otis problem. Did it work?
Well, most of our complaints have been from Otis as opposed to Allen.
Did it work?
So we have made a change in that, where we're not allowing vehicles to come out of Cold Park when you go up Otis. To the best of my knowledge, we haven't got any complaints about this past weekend, so I'm assuming it was much better because I was hearing from at least one of those people on a regular basis.
Right, right.
Traffic would have been down substantially, not letting those cars go up the street.
Well, I think there are, long-term, some issues in that just general area about trucks. They must be using Waze, or, you know, some of these programs that send them all over. I've been on one of those merry-go-rounds, and, you know, if it's a matter of signage to prevent some of these big trucks from going up and down those side streets, and speed limit signs, and no parking signs. But I think that the call I got was totally related to exacerbated by the, you know, once we close both sides of Front Street, then all of a sudden, it's, that's what there was. So, you know, if at the least this has solved the problem for them, short-term, but again, I think there's a longer-term problem down there.
I agree. Anyone else have anything for Jim? All right. I want to just update the board as Jim mentioned. Obviously, when we met, we said that regional sewer to get North Situate online was a priority. Yesterday, I had a meeting with the chairs of Cohasset and Hull, and they indicated that this needed to be put on the front burner for all three communities, all agreed, that need to be put on the front burner, and that they wanted to convene issue, convene all of the boards and all of the sewer commissioners quickly. And then Jim followed up with a meeting today with the town administrators to talk about what that would look like, if you'd like to...
Yeah, and he reiterated what Karen had said about having a meeting, and my only point was, I want to drop that date. So we want an answer. When is this going to be decided, whether we're going for it or not? He's going to send a letter to Hull and Situate outlining the process and saying that we'll have a decision by the end of September. That was what we said today. So they're talking about it tonight. It is supposed to be one of their top three priorities, the sewer system and the regional sewer. So hopefully, Karen's meeting with their chairs is going to jumpstart this a little bit, and we'll be able to get moving. Or, as we said before, just get an answer, yes or no, so we can make decisions and move forward.
So that's the update of that. The only other thing I would add is I just want to, you know, acknowledge all of the incredible work that our town administrator has done to make sure that those fields are spectacular and on budget, and you've done a great job. So thank you for that so far. We'll get it over the finish line. And that we will be continuing our video updates again every Monday morning there. And the school committee has joined those updates because, obviously, between now and the start of school, they're going to have a lot of information to share. So that's at 9:30 every Monday morning and posted on our website after that. So that concludes our town administrator's update. I'd like to go to our first agenda item, which is a recognition of exceptional service for one of our firefighters. We're going to have to do some musical chairs here so that we can invite Chief Murphy, Deputy Chief Elliott. Mr. Smith?
How are you?
I'm an EMT, yeah, time. So Jack Smith, who was a dedicated father for 35 years in the county of Situate. Jack started on January 2nd, 1985, and retired February 10th, 2020. Timing's everything.
Yeah.
So Jack, Jack was an EMT. Jack worked the ambulance every day like we all did until the paramedics came, so dedicated. Jack is one of those guys, was, he was my partner for a while. I knew him as a deputy partner for a while, stationed for you when we were lieutenants. Consistent, always there, firefighter, EMT, whatever it was, Jack knew what he was doing. He worked hard, checked his equipment all the time, and he would never, never let you down. So always dedicated. He was a mentor to many, many of the young guys. He'd take the time. He had a lot of patience to go out and teach them. Jack, in the early nineties, was actually a mechanic for the fire department for a while. He also volunteered to be on the fire department for 20 years. And Jack was also a CPR instructor, still is today, but taught many of us in the early days before Mark Tomlin took over. Jack taught CPR and also, like, the rec department and other departments in town. So Jack's always been involved, always stepped up. Firefighter Sunday, we do that service every year. Jack runs that, and he still wants to continue to run that, and it's just a lot of work. So Jack has just been an outstanding member for our department. I was sorry to see him leave for his firefighting abilities, EMT abilities, but also is a good friend. Jack and I are friends. Alan and Jack are friends, so just a great guy, but, you know, happy for you, Jack, that you retired. Lucky guy. But also, really, just for his service. He earned it. He earned it. He's enjoying, I talked the other day, he enjoys his retirement, and this is the guy. You're welcome to say anything exactly you'd like.
Just thank you. And it was great working with you as your partner, and it went by fast. It, you know, I didn't go far from work. Before that, I was working down Paul Young, it's 14 miles down the road. Parents lived across the street. But it was great, and it went by fast, and I'm glad I did it. It was my father that told me, hey, you should take the test. He knew a lot of Boston firefighters. That's how he met my mom. And it felt well.
We are so excited to have you in here. You retired in February, and unfortunately, COVID has delayed an opportunity to really thank people that have served this town as you have. But I did ask around about you, because I've known you. I think you actually came to my house a couple of times. And I just want to share with, I'm going to read you a couple of things that your peers have said. You know, I don't know if you should hear this, but I'll let it. So the comments I get back were, "You would do anything for anyone, never got mad at anyone, never came to work in a bad mood, got along with everyone, great firefighter, great EMT," and it just goes on and on and on. So the board, I'm sure, will want to add to my comments, but thank you for your service. We will miss you. Thank you for being there all this time. And I will see if Mr. Vignani would like to add some comments.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know you personally, but putting 35 years of service in the fire department in such a high-stress job is quite a mark, and I appreciate it, and I know that our firefighters in this town have done such a great job, and we really have been without major incident for a decade. So that's just the hard work from all you guys, and I appreciate everything you gave to the town. So enjoy your retirement.
Ms. Conley, your next.
Well, I don't know you either, but I will say that I went to my first firefighter's Sunday event this past year, and it was really moving. And so I really appreciate the work that goes into organizing an event like that. And I hope that in the coming years, more people attend, because it is very moving. And so I appreciate it, and I appreciate your dedication to the town.
Thank you.
So I forget who it was who said, anytime there's a crisis, to look for the helpers and to know that you've been helping out and being a helper in times of crisis or even times of just teaching. It's, it just warms my heart, and it's just, I can't thank you enough. There's nothing we can say besides appreciate your dedication, so thank you.
Ditto. It's always hard to go last, because, you know, just thank you so much for your service, Jack. And 35 years is remarkable. My uncle was a firefighter, so I know it's a lot of work, a lot of dedication. One question, do you have like one memory that really stands out for you over 35 years that you just can't get out of your head?
Actually, it was probably one of the better saves, I guess you could call it, was I was just visiting down Hemmerock, where I was stationed at the time, and the phone rang. It was Frank Riley and Kevin Spitz for work. Frank gets off the phone, said, "We have a two-and-a-half-year-old girl not breathing." And he said, "Come with us." So I was in my own car, and I worked with Frank in the ambulance for a number of years. And we get there, and it was a two-and-a-half-year-old girl up in the bathroom with her grandmother, and she was breathing at that point, but very shallow. She was a little unconscious. Not sure what was going on. She was hot to the touch. We ventilated her and got her breathing to slow down, get more breaths in, and her color came back. And by the time the ambulance got there, she was at the point where she was looking around. So that was a good save, because kids are the toughest. It's just the way it is. And she ended up having, oh, jeez, I forget the term right now. She had an infection in a railway that caused it to close. And croup, it was croup. And which was kind of unusual, because you didn't see it much back then. They'd kind of gotten away from it, but that was a good save. That one always comes to the top of my head. That was, that hit me one of the hardest. And there's other ones. There's numerous. I can't, you know...
But that's a testimony to you as a man, too, that you chose, that that one stays in your mind. And, you know, thank you for that.
It's been, you know, it's, I hate to leave him, but time for the new guys to come in. It's a young man's sport.
You've done your duty, for sure. Thank you.
I just wanted to be here to witness, you know, Jack receiving his 35-year reward. I've been a friend of Jack's for, I've worked with him for 31 years, but a friend of his for longer. I was his captain for a number of years. I witnessed some acts of terrorism on Jack. I've seen him save lives and property on this job, and I really do appreciate his unflappable character. And, you know, he's a family man. He's a dedicated father, grandfather, so there's more to Jack than just being a firefighter, too. I wanted to congratulate him on his 35 years and wish him a very happy retirement.
I wanted to add my brother here at one point had actually taken the time, he volunteered his time to get a huge grant we had gotten once for new squat packs and a new squat machine. And so he'd do better.
Doc knows how to find that money. Yeah. We're not running 30 yet. Always more. We cannot thank you enough for all of your service, and I know how much you've seen, but we do have a little bit, for at least you have something to put on your mantle, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Enjoy.
Thank you, Jack. I am too.
Does he get a special award for being Murph's partner? That's great. And keeping with doing fun things, we are now on to our 6:55 discuss and vote, acceptance of donations. We have two this evening, if I can just find them. I don't believe anyone is calling in for the first. Do we have an indication of whether or not they're participating? I don't think so. I'll run it.
No, we don't have anybody participating for the first.
Okay. So as you, as the board probably remembers, when the EDC joined forces to, with the Chamber and others to form Situate Loves Local, we were very fortunate to recruit a woman that is starting up a digital, a marketing firm called 95 Creative. And through her contacts, she was, she reached out to a group called Midnight Brunch, which is a video production company, who immediately raised their hand to produce and distribute the video that I'm sure you all saw, that, you know, stars Mr. Bedrow and other, you know, celebrities in town. It was a great production. They put it together in like three days, and what they are requesting is that we acknowledge the donated time and resources that they did, and that's what this donation is. Does anyone have any questions? I don't think anyone's waiting, so we don't need to open it up for questions. Do I have a motion?
Will the Board of Selectmen accept a donation to the town of Situate from Midnight Brunch on behalf of 95 Creative for the Situate Loves Local campaign commercial? The donated state value is $8,015.50.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, a second.
Second.
Mr. Goodrich, any further discussion?
Just thank you.
Thank you. It was a very professionally-done production, and it was, it was great. It just showed Situate at its best, so thank you for them.
Yeah, I agree. I thought it was great. Great. And seeing no further discussion, yes, Ms. Conley?
Does it have a shelf life? Can we keep running it, or is it...
They were very careful in the, in the script to have it, it really doesn't, it is pretty timeless. I suspect that it will expire when Situate Loves Local no longer needs to be...
Is it posted on the Situate Loves Local website?
It's on the Situate Loves Local website. It's on Instagram and social media. Those are the best places to buy it.
Okay.
And Facebook as well.
So do you run it at all? I just have to plot it on...
And it was also used at the beginning of the drive-in movie, at the trailer.
Oh, good.
Oh, did they? That's nice.
Good. Good. So we had a first, a second, and comments. Any more? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. The second donation, is there somebody on? Okay.
Lisa Huffman should be on.
Lisa?
Lisa Huffman is on.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Lisa. Can you hear us?
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight.
Oh, thank you. Would you like to describe the donation that you are asking for acceptance of?
Yes. I was contacted by a woman named Beth King. She lost her sister eight years ago to cervical cancer. And her sister Christina Pickering Buckley was a longtime employee at Dripped Way Animal Hospital and an avid dog lover. So they have asked, if in her memory, they could donate a library box to the Situate Dog Park. It furthers our, part of our mission statement, which is to encourage responsible dog ownership through education. Friends of Situate Dog Park would pay the cost to register the free library. It's about $35. And then we would stock it initially with a mix of books that are dog-related, you know, training books, and as well as others. And if you're not familiar with how the free library boxes work, it's just a free book sharing box. So anybody can take a book or leave a book. It's all on the honor system. And it's just a nice thing to have in the community. Situate has currently three registered free libraries. One is in Minnetonka. One is at the Wampatack School, and there's one in the West End on the Slap Road. And we're hoping that the Board of Selectmen will approve this donation so that we can add one to the Situate Dog Park.
That's very exciting. We did receive a picture of the proposed box in our packet tonight.
Yes. Yep, I did send along a couple pictures.
Yep. It's smaller than one in Minnetonka, and it looks, I'm sure everyone's familiar with these. This is exciting. Does the board have any questions for Lisa?
No, I, you know, can you hear us, Lisa?
It's a little bit muzzled. I can hear whoever just spoke. I can hear you the clearest, but the other person that spoke, I didn't really hear what she said.
Do you want to say it again, Karen? Mara, you say it. Because you're on the microphone.
The chair was just thanking you for, I do have a question for you, though. Will the Dog, Friends of the Dog Park be responsible for replacing if it does wear over the years?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We'll either replace it or take it down if it's necessary. But yes, we would be responsible for that. And the, I didn't send the picture, but they're also providing a post. So we'll just need to dig a hole and pour some cement for the post, and that'll be it.
Great. It looks great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's a great idea and a nice way for them to honor their sister.
Will there be a plaque or anything?
Lisa, will there be a plaque?
Yes. So when we register with the free, the Little Free Library Organization, we'll get a plaque, and we'll have something with her name on it. And, you know, I'll work with her family to see what they would like it to say. But then you also get like an ID number that's assigned to that library from the Little Free Library Organization. So people can, if they go to their website, they can find it, you know, if they want to look up where their Little Free Library in Situate, ours will come up because it will be registered with them.
Oh, that's great. I didn't know that.
Just curious, will it be at all decorated in a dog theme or anything?
You know, if we have some creative individuals who would like to decorate it, and if that's okay with you all, I certainly would be open to that. But we're going to be getting it as it is pictured in the pictures that I sent you.
Looks great.
Love it.
If we have the opportunity to open it up out there to some creative people who might want to have, you know, a little design contest or something to decorate it, we would love to do that. Especially with everything going on right now, it's nice to get the community involved in something with the dog parks because, you know, we've put all of our fundraising efforts on hold. So while this wouldn't be a fundraising event, it would just be a nice way to reconnect with the people who are using the park so they don't forget about us when we do start fundraising again.
I think it's terrific. Two of my favorite things, dogs and books, all in one place. I would entertain a motion.
Will the Board of Selectmen accept a donation from Beth King of a Wooden Free Library to the Friends of Situate Dog Park?
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Connolly. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimously accept this generous offer. Thank you so much, Lisa. And thank the family for...
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you all, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Lisa. You as well.
Okay, thanks. Bye-bye.
Bye.
I assume there wasn't anyone else waiting to talk? Okay. It's lost, right? Our 7:10, right on schedule, is to discuss our and vote on the Finance Director Town Accountant's contract. Our intrepid Ms. Holt is coming to the end of her, has come to the end of her contract. And we would, as proposed in the backup, is a three-year extension. We tried to get her tied to the building, but that wasn't in there. And we so much appreciate her work. So I would like to open it to the board if there are any questions about the contract. Otherwise, we can... You staying, right?
Yep.
Any questions, Ms. Connolly?
No, I just, I'd just like to say that I got a very nice email. I won't read it, but from one of the members of the Capital Planning Committee, who said that if he was still working, he would be after Nancy to hire her. So he said that, you know, she's so professional and does such a great job. And I know from my experience on CPC, we couldn't have operated without her. And I know that every other board in town that has any questions about finance and beyond finance finds Nancy to be invaluable. So I wish we could have gotten her for more than three years, but...
Any other comments? I know the board feels the same.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I mean, the contract is very similar to the previous ones. There was one clause that we added similar to what we did to Jim's, where you just weren't able to take vacation for this whole COVID season. So we kind of, you know, worked out that in the, in the contract here. But otherwise, you know, you do a great job. You're spectacular. You provide us with all the information we need. And everybody knows it. You know, everybody that's worked with you has nothing but praise to say for you. So we're ecstatic that you're staying, that you're as committed to us as we are to you. So thank you very much for your service.
That's what they have, can't smile.
Yeah, I know. We're all smiling.
Smile behind my mask.
Great. And we do hope that you will take some vacation. You deserve it, that's for sure. Any other comments from the board? Ms. Kern?
I would be remiss not to say thank you for all your professional help. And I'm very glad that you're here for three more years. So you do an excellent job, Nancy, and you are there. You do, you're available to everybody. And that's so important as a public employee. And, you know, your willingness to go to all the different evening meetings as the Finance Director, I think is just phenomenal. And the way in which you helped the Golf Committee was phenomenal, too. So you really showed your leadership skills there as well. So I just want to say thank you. And I do want to echo, take your vacation. Okay? Keep that mind as sharp as it always is, and make sure you get, you know, take the time that you need.
Right. Mr. Goodrich?
I will just, I've learned so much from you. And I'm still trying to learn, I'm still getting my feet wet. But it's the patience that you've shown to help me and people trying to understand municipal finance, which is not as easy as other, it's just different. And I just want to thank you for your patience.
Thank you all very much. It's very much appreciated.
We appreciate you.
Well, then, do I have a motion? Is anyone on the line that would like to talk about Nancy Holt? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve the employment contract for Finance Director Town Accountant Nancy Holt.
Second, Ms. Connolly, seconded by Ms. Kern. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. And thank you for all the snacks on the late-night meetings. Our next order of business is to discuss vote the ramification, ratification of restaurant extensions of premises for Salt Society and the Hiberian Tavern. Mr. Bedrow.
So two additional outdoor premise extensions. One was for the Hibernian, which has opened up. The board had previously given them permission to have outdoor seating behind the Hibernian. They wish to take advantage of the closed street and be out front on those times when Front Street is closed. So when Front Street is closed, they'll be out front. When Front Street is open, they'll be in back. They can't do both. They're not supposed to do both. They'll have a couple seats on the sidewalk right out in front, still leaving room for people in handicap accessibility going by. The second one, Salt Society, this is not part of the closure of the road. What I discussed with her, closing down in front of that end, that really causes a lot of problems for traffic and traffic flow. So she actually has an agreement with Mollie's Realty next door to put some tables out in front of Mollie's Realty and have outside seating out there. And then she will continue to do some of her business down in front of Reaver, which is a sister business of her for Salt Society when that's available. The hours are exactly the same as the hours that have been granted to the other businesses. Reaver did ask for extended hours. I said I only have the authority to grant what's here. If you want to come back later, you can come back later. But right now, you're just getting what everybody else has.
How many tables did they put on Front Street, Hibernian?
Hibernian, I have to go back and look, Tony, off the top of my head.
Looked to be about 10, maybe?
About 10 tables, yes. Seating for about 40.
So are they, they're directly across from where Reaver is, right?
Yeah, we wanted to try to stagger that, but when we went down there and looked, there's really no place for them to go that's close to their restaurant. So I've met with Chief Murphy and Al and Chief Thompson about having that whole thing closed. Because it's such a small area that's closed from a fire department, they can get to where they need to get to if something happens. And if it's something big, we're going to be getting everybody out of there anyways. So the issue was, would I be able to get something through? We couldn't move them far enough away to have room to kind of snake people through.
So can people walk down the street between the two establishments, or do you have to walk on the sidewalk?
I believe there is some space between them. I'll have to go back and look. But there's room on both sidewalks.
I was there Friday night, yeah.
Yeah.
So there is between the two, roped off here. So good. Because food's coming out of both places on sidewalks, and it's, you know...
It's been very popular. And Hibernian's gotten very good reviews out of the gates. So has Salt. They both have. So I was down there last Sunday, and there was nobody sitting outside. It was 98 degrees, and the sun was making.
Tough, yeah. Tough day.
But it has been very popular.
Ms. Kern? Oh, sorry.
Are they going, is Salt going to keep the two tables in front of their windows in addition to the others?
Yeah, you already approved those. So yeah, it doesn't change.
Well, speaking of that, is there a way to put a sign up right when you get, if you're coming out of the Millworth parking lot? That's the little street that people use to get out of there. And when you're at Salt Society, there's virtually no room between where you step off and the road, to put a sign to people driving out saying, caution, caution, because you'll have waitresses and waiters crossing that.
That's a good point.
And it's literally, it's almost like a blind drive when you step off of that sidewalk.
I don't know where I would put it because it's not town property.
Well, maybe they should, Jim.
Party, but Salt Society should probably, we can tell them to put something up, but I wouldn't be able to put something on that parking lot.
Because if you put it up at the back where their kitchen is, just a caution sign.
Yeah. I mean, it's a problem for people just crossing the street, and I mind someone crossing the street with food.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
We can send them an email and just say, you know, try to put up some sort of caution sign, people crossing the road, and they can throw that up.
Just don't want to see anyone get hit in the name of...
Good point. Yeah. Did you have something else, Mr. Vignani?
Nope.
All right. No further comments or questions? So take a motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen ratify the temporary licenses issued by the Town Administrator to the Salt Society and the Hiberian Tavern to serve liquor under a temporary extension of premises and outdoor seating license in accordance with COVID-19 Order Number 35, and consistent with the process of approving such requests established by the Board of Selectmen.
Moved by Ms. Kern.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. Any other comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous, 5-0. Those are good comments on the direction. I did know that there was an hour and a half wait at Salt Society on Sunday this weekend. So good luck to them. The next item on our agenda is a discussion vote of the special town meeting date. Mr. Bedrow.
For the last Selectmen's meeting, we discussed whether to have a town meeting in October or a town meeting in November. The decision was to push it to November so we have better numbers from the state, hopefully. We had a check with the moderator and the town clerk. November 16th is fine with both of them for a special town meeting. And that's obviously COVID-dependent.
And in our backup, we've been provided with the backwards schedule. If we are to do a special town meeting on the 16th, we'll have to open the warrant next meeting. It will close on September 8th. And then it will go into the pipeline for advisory, capital, and any other board that needs to review the warrant. So we'll start that process next week. Does anyone have any questions about this date or the schedule?
Just one quick question. Jim, are we going to try and put all of those articles that we didn't do at the annual town meeting on this?
That's the thought. But again, I think as we meet on this and see what's going on, we may say some of those can actually wait till the spring. But the plan was, anything that wasn't done as the annual will be done as the special. I think it's going to depend on what's going on with COVID and what's going on in the larger community. We'll have to have a discussion whether or not we want to put all those things on, and possibly end up with a two-night town meeting in November.
Do you think, I don't, I mean, we've got a budget now through October. Is there a possibility we may want to revise our budget? Or will we not have enough information to do that?
At this point.
What about the information we got from Representative Kearney and...
Yeah, I mean, I've been looking at that. I'm not sure, and Nancy can correct me, I'm not sure if that's a guarantee for the full year funding, or whether it's just a guarantee that they're going to fully fund us for the next three months.
It really wasn't clear.
It's really not clear, Tony. It's just they're postponing it for three months. So I'm not spending it yet. If we were going to appropriate it, I think the only change we would make in terms of personnel is we would go and fill the Planted Directors position earlier. Any of the rest of that money would not go into any sort of recurring spending or personnel. We could put money back in roads and seawalls just because it's a good time to do it.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is the school.
Yeah.
So I know that they...
And I had a little conversation with the new superintendent about that. I would be very cautious about them putting that money back into personnel, because I don't, if this is a full-year guarantee, I have no idea how the state's doing it unless they are somehow convinced they're going to get federal funds. And if they do get federal funds, and it is a full-year guarantee, we're right back in the soup next year because those federal funds are now gone, and we're right back in the hole again. So I wouldn't want to take this and put it anywhere where I'm going to say, hey, we're going to fill this position, we're going to bring this person back, and then next spring say, thanks for coming back for six, eight months, and we're going to let you go again. It's really very fluid at this point.
It's probably important that we find out. I mean, we got letter from Senator O'Connor. We got emails from Kearney. So we should probably understand what that means, whether it's...
Working on it.
Yeah. Because it was great news. You know, we decreased the budget by...
It seemed like it. It seemed like it was excellent news. But as the more I looked at them, oh my God, I don't know if this is exactly the news.
Wordsmithing.
I think Jim's absolutely right. I think there's just too much uncertainty with not knowing federal, not knowing the state, not having, you know, a state budget even approved, that, you know, the commitment to keep us full for as long as they can, I think is, that is good news. But I don't think any of their officers know any more than Jim does right now. So we'll work on it.
I mean, I think there's going to be some federal money. I think there's two proposals. The Senate proposal is to take the current CARES Act money and allow that to be used by states and municipalities for revenue replacement, as opposed to just for COVID expenses. The House, I think they call it the HEROES Act, passed by the House, has almost a trillion dollars in additional money for state and local government. So I think there's going to be something, just what it is and how much and what we're going to get. It hasn't been clear at this point.
Mara?
The only other question I have is, we did talk about putting on special town meeting an article about changing the name of the board to the Select Board from the Select Men. So is that something that...
It's on my list.
Anything additional we need to do to make that happen?
No, I think you'd have to have a hearing on it, have the Selectmen's meeting, but that'd be about it.
Okay.
I just got drafted, Senator Consulate would take a look at it. But it's a special act of the legislature asking them to make a change to the charter.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions about, all right, I don't, I assume no one's waiting to talk about the town meeting date? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to hold the Town of Situate Falls Special Town Meeting on Monday, November 16th, 2020, at the Situate High School Gymnasium.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Kern. Any other discussions? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. 5-0, unanimous. The next, oh, we're on to new business. We
have a drain layers license to review and approve for Ms., for G.A. Flammer, the extensive background on this gentleman. And there were several letters of recommendations from folks that have hired him in the past. Does anyone have any questions about this application or comments?
Motion?
Motion, please.
Move to approve a new drain layers license for G.A. Flammer.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Goodrich. Any further discussions? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Next is to discuss poll hour... Next is to discuss poll hours for the state primary. Is our town clerk going to do this or you, Jim?
I thought the town clerk was, but.
We're ahead of schedule.
She doesn't usually come for us. We just.
It's usually pretty.
That's fine.
Pretty standard.
Pretty standard, because the state sets the hours for the state primary anyways, not us.
Oh, really? I did not realize that. So Ms. Garner, our town clerk has proposed that we set the state hours, which is aligned with the state requirements, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on September 1st to be held in the high school gymnasium. I will note that absentee ballot, I think the deadline is August 22nd. If anyone knows different, to register to vote for that. You can verify that on the town clerk's website. Sess making a face, I may have it too late. No?
No, that's right.
Double-check that, you can still register to vote. And absentee and early voting is required. And all of that information is also available online. Does anyone have any questions about the times?
No.
All right. There's no further discussion, I'll take a motion.
Motion to set poll hours for the state primary for Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, at the Situate High School Gymnasium, located at 606 Chief Justice Cushing Way. State election poll hours are 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Moved by Ms. Kern, seconded by Mr. Vignani. No further discussion. There is a whole schedule, I just want to, now that I see it in front of me. It is, voter registration is August 22nd. I remembered that right. There will be a two-week early voting schedule. You can come into town hall to vote. And you can, you should apply as quickly as you can for the mail-in so that you can get those back. Great. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, 5-0 unanimous. The last item on our new business is to discuss and vote on the Charter Committee, Charter Review Committee. Unfortunately, one of the appointed members is our esteemed Mr. Norton, passed away this winter, and that leaves an opening. The Charter Review Committee had been started right before COVID hit. Mr. Vignani led that charge. And then we had to all take a little break. And we're ready to reconvene starting this week. We have received an application from Ms. Marla Menier, who is well-known to most of the members of the board for her work. And I will highlight just a couple of them. She has served on the CPC Committee. She's served on advisory. She's served on capital planning. She's been on the Public Facility Master Planning Committee. I worked with her personally on the Library Foundation, and the list goes on and on. So she is a dedicated volunteer to this town with a vast knowledge of how things get done and how things can be improved. So that's my background. And we didn't ask her to interview because it's complicated with COVID and most of the board was aware of her extensive background. So I'll open it up to see if anyone has any comments on this application.
I think she'd be great.
I would just say, I think she's going to do a great job. I was on advisory with her years ago. And she's, knows the inner workings of the town. And she's very passionate and involved, so she's a good addition.
I agree.
Great.
Likewise, I served with her on CPC. And she was very valuable. And I know she's now involved with Conservation Commission, helping get the trails together out in the West End. So she's a very dedicated volunteer, and I highly recommend her.
Did you get a chance to speak with her or?
Left a voicemail.
Okay. Well, then, I will entertain a motion.
Move to appoint Marla Menier to the Charter Review Commission for a term of one year or until the successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within 30 days.
Second? Seconded by, moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Connolly. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And Nannasley, welcome, Marla. Thank you for your service. Lorraine, would you send her the, or Michelle, who, I don't know who sent her that?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Yeah, send it to her so that she can jump on. I know she won't be.
I already sent her a note today.
Oh, you're the best, okay. Great, well, it is now 7:30, and we are on to liaison reports. Does anyone like to kick off?
I can start. I had a meeting last week with Situate Wind. We've all been talking about that as one of our priorities as well, to get our arms around. And Jim and myself met with three people from there to try and find out what is going on. If, you know, it's been 10 or 15 years. Has there been any changes in technology? And just kind of get our arms around what's going on there. There's a number of residents that are still complaining about the noise. And basically, we wanted to know, you know, if we oiled it. Would it make less noise? Is, you know, is it anything simple? The nuts and bolts of it are, they do a lot of maintenance on it, and there's really nothing they can do mechanically to the device. But what they did do, and I brought some of it that I'm still going over, is they gave us a lot of, I asked for some of the information in terms of where, what's going on, wind direction, our parameters and costs and all that sort of stuff. So I've got a lot of information, and they emailed me a lot more historically for the whole year that I'm still kind of chewing through. But it's, at some point, I think, Chair said that we're going to have a meeting in September into September where we can talk about it in more detail. But there's some interesting things. And Al Banger was at the meeting as well. Interesting things to look at. And I think that there's going to be some revisions to the parameters that we've set for the thing being turned off. So they were very, very nice and very willing to help us out and very willing to analyze data for us and very willing to make any adjustments that we want. So I think we just need to understand it a little better and then, you know, make some proposals and talk about it. Did I miss anything, Jim?
No. It's a boatload of information that we're going to have to grind through. And one of the things Tony and I are going to work on is correlating the data that we have about the wind direction and wind speed at the turbine with when the board has been getting complaints from the residents.
Yeah, it never seems to align.
See, it is not currently aligning with your current shut-off. That is obvious. Your current shut-off is the southwest, plus or minus 22 and 1/2 degrees within certain wind parameters. I think we said the last complaint we got prior to the other day was the wind was from the northwest. So that's one of the things we're going to look at and see if there's a patent that shows. Because your current shut-off is based upon the patent of complaints that you received before, when we were getting the complaints during this period. So we made the adjustments to the turbine. So the first thing we're going to look at is, is there a patent to the complaints that we're getting now? The wind's coming from this direction or that direction, or this speed or that speed? You can look at that. If it exists, then you say, okay, we can then extend or change the shut-off period. What'll that look like and what'll that potentially cost?
And you confirm that the shut-off that has already been approved is actually occurring?
Yes.
Yeah. The wind just doesn't blow from that direction?
And may I just, may I add? For the September meeting, when you do work up those financials, can we understand what the implications are? If it is shut-off, it's from the southwest and the northwest? Because if it's just coming from that direction as a whole.
We have the southwest numbers already, because we've been doing that. As Tony just said, it doesn't blow a lot from the southwest. So those numbers, they were only less than $1,000, I think, Tony, off the top of my head. But they do blow from the northwest.
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit, and with more velocity. And I'm not the expert, but as the wind speed goes up, the generation power of the turbine, it's not linear. It actually, so the higher the wind speed, the more it costs to shut it off, because it's generating more power that they're losing, so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It'll be a different number. But the southwest is really small money for what we're doing right now.
Yeah, so what we decide before you go on is, I think it's September 22nd is the target date?
Yeah.
To have invite Epsilon in to present the study that we were supposed to get before COVID hit. But also to make sure that Jim and Tony and the rest of the team have time to ask and answer all the questions. We'll need to have a robust conversation at that time. So that's the plan right now. You had further liaisons, sir?
Nope, that's all for the.
All your liaisons? Anyone else like to report from any of their committee?
I'd like to say the Conservation Commission would like to remind people that they need to get their personal property, whether it's a boat or whatever it is, off of Museum Beach by August 15th. After that date, anything that's left there will be taken to the transfer station. So you've got a little more time now, but I'd be getting up there if I were you and I had something down there.
I hope it's off tonight, because it's going to be a little windy tonight.
No, but I do want to say that Karen and I went to the graduation ceremony on Saturday. It was a beautiful day, and the kids were great. And I didn't see you, Tony, and I think you were way in the back with the Vs.
Yep.
That'd have been me hollering.
It was very moving, and it all went really well. And the field looked great. And congratulations to the class of 2020.
It really was a great day. It was nice to see that. Anybody else have comments about their, yes?
So I had a good conversation with the Commission on Disability. I'm still doing intros and talking to folks. Not everyone's had some meetings. But they were just interesting to talk about Widows Walk, and they were just very interested in seeing those plans as soon as possible we discussed, making sure, even though it's at initial stages. So we'll just make sure they're still informed. For Widows Walk.
I was so enamored by your conversations, I totally forgot what I was going to say. All right, anybody else have a liaison report? No. I reserve my right to come back to it when it comes back to my hand. Do we have any correspondence, Adam Clark?
Yes, we do. The Board of Selectmen received an invitation from the Situate Veterans Advisory Council to join them at the Situate Rotary for the unveiling of the Purple Heart Community Sign. As much as they would like to make it an open, public celebration, obviously, first of all, given the location, it's dangerous down there. But second of all, because of COVID. But we hope people will maybe take a moment of silence at 7:00 on Friday, August 7th, to remember the Purple Heart recipients in our midst. And I know there's a luminary celebration happening. I think it's the same day. So I think that's a great thing. The Lawson Tower Bell Concert will be held on Sunday, August 9th, at 6:00 p.m. The Historical Society's good friend, Lanay Badger, will play inspirational selections for our times. What the world needs now is love, sweet love, for example.